So once again, good morning and welcome to the Committee on Health. At this time, we ask if you can please put phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone. I am Councilmember Lynn Schulman, Chair of the New York City Council Committee on Health. I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Barron. And I want to thank all of you for joining us at today's important hearing on Intro Number Four, introduced by Deputy Speaker Ayala, and of which I am a co-prime sponsor. This bill would prohibit the sale of guinea pigs as pets and clarify the definition of the term "pet shop" to address its inconsistent use in the Administrative Code. I also want to thank Alexandra Silver, Director of the Mayor's Office of Animal Welfare, Risa Weinstock, Director of the Animal Care Centers of New York City, and Corinne Schiff, the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene's Deputy Commissioner for Environmental Health, for being here to testify and answer questions, as well as the organizations and individuals who have been working tirelessly to ensure that this bill gets passed. As we all know, the city shelters experienced a surge of abandoned and surrendered guinea pigs after the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. During lockdown, New Yorkers, for various reasons including social isolation, and entertainment for children who were stuck inside, cleared the city's pet stores of animals like gerbils, lizards, and guinea pigs. But this has led to an unacceptable result. Around 600 guinea pigs have been surrendered to city animal shelters so far in 2022 compared to only 281 surrendered during the same period in 2019. In October, a box with 22 guinea pigs of all ages, five of which were pregnant, was abandoned in the lobby of an apartment in Staten Island. Guinea pigs have also been released by owners in places like city parks, which is not only illegal but also detrimental to the animal's survival. Making things even more difficult is the fact that there are a very limited number of veterinarians in New York City known to have the skills to spay and neuter guinea pigs, many of which live for up to 10 years. It is vital that potential owners are provided with the information and tools necessary to properly care for these animals. All in all, we cannot allow this crisis to continue, and the city must take action. Our ACCs and shelter staff are suffering as they try desperately to accommodate this massive influx. That is why Intro Number Four is so critical, and I am proud to be chairing this hearing today. I have always been an advocate for our animal friends in New York City, and the best way to address the guinea pig crisis is to ban their sale from New York City pet stores and encourage adoption and fostering from shelters. That being said, if you are interested in adopting or fostering a guinea pig, you can do so through the Animal Care Centers of New York City. I want to conclude by thanking the committee staff for their work on this hearing, Sarah Sutra, Legislative Counsel, and Menor Butt, Policy Analyst, as well as my team, Chief of Staff Jonathan Boucher, my Legislative Director Kevin McAlire, and my Communications Director Javier Figueroa. Deputy Speaker Ayala, who introduced Intro Number Four, is on her way, so as soon as she comes, we'll stop and have her speak on behalf of the bill. I will now turn it over to Committee Counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. We will now hear testimony from members of the administration. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? You may begin when ready. As a note, as the Chair said, when Deputy Speaker Ayala arrives, we will be pausing just to let her make her statement, and then you resume. But you may begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairperson Schulman and Councilmember Barron. My name is Alexandra Silver, and I am Director of the Mayor's Office of Animal Welfare. I'm grateful that the city council is taking up this legislation concerning guinea pigs and appreciate the opportunity to testify in its favor. I'm joined by Risa Weinstock, President and CEO of Animal Care Centers of New York City, ACC, who will also offer testimony, and Corinne Schiff, Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Environmental Health at the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. As laid out in the city charter, the Mayor's Office of Animal Welfare has the power to advise and assist the mayor in the coordination and cooperation among agencies under the jurisdiction of the mayor that are involved in animal welfare administration, regulation, management, or programs. A wide variety of issues fall under this purview, including but not limited to those surrounding wildlife management, exotic animals, and animal abuse, as well as animal shelters, animal population control, and pet shops. In New York City, several agencies, including the Health Department, Parks Department, and NYPD, are responsible for animal-related issues. Many additional agencies, for example, the Department of Social Services and NICA, come across animal issues during their operations. This office is positioned to both raise awareness among other offices and agencies regarding animal welfare issues and resources and work with them to improve animal welfare protocols. Another important function of the office is to serve as liaison for the city regarding animal welfare needs and concerns. One such concern is the large number of guinea pigs being brought to ACC, which is contracted by the Health Department to operate the city's animal shelter system. As Ms. Weinstock can speak to more directly, the increase in guinea pigs in recent years has been an added strain on the organization, which is charged with a daunting task. ACC is the only open-admissions animal sheltering organization in the city. It accepts all animals regardless of medical condition, behavior, or age. A variety of species come to ACC from a variety of sources. Some are stray animals with unknown histories, while many are surrendered by owners who can no longer care for them. Animals may be brought to ACC by members of the public, NYPD officers, and Parks employees, as well as by ACC's own rescue specialists. The administration appreciates the hard work and dedication of ACC's staff. Running the open-admissions animal shelter system in a city of nearly 9 million people is challenging enough without the added burden of operating during a pandemic. As ACC strives to end animal homelessness in New York City, it's important we recognize the role the broader community plays in such a mission. ACC did not create the high number of guinea pigs coming into its shelters and cannot be expected to solve the issue on its own. Intro Four is a common sense effort to address a concrete problem. While it would ban the sale of guinea pigs in pet shops, it would not prohibit New Yorkers from keeping guinea pigs as pets, and guinea pigs could still be adopted through a humane society, animal shelter, or animal rescue group. ACC currently adopts out guinea pigs, as well as rabbits, cats, and dogs. ACC and other animal welfare organizations frequently host adoption events across the city in partnership with pet stores and other venues. Would you like me to pause? I'm sorry, I see we were joined by the Deputy Speaker. Okay, thank you. Guinea pigs can make wonderful companion animals, but like any pet, they come with responsibilities, and the decision to bring one home should not be taken lightly. One benefit of adopting a companion animal from ACC is the counseling that comes along with it and the connection with the organization in case any questions or concerns about animal care come up down the line. While promoting adoption is essential, animal sheltering across the country over the past several years has focused more and more on preventing animals from coming into shelters in the first place, and not just on rehoming efforts. Helping people keep their pets is a prime goal of ACC and other leaders in animal sheltering. The bottom line is that it's not enough to focus only on increasing adoptions or finding alternative placements with rescue groups. We must also address root causes. The Mayor's Office of Animal Welfare appreciates the city council's acting on this issue and seeking a solution that both protects the well-being of guinea pigs and could help alleviate difficult conditions in animal shelters. Thank you again for the opportunity to address this proposed legislation. We are looking forward to discussing the details of the bill further with you. I will now turn it over to my colleague, Risa Weinstock of ACC, to deliver her testimony.
Before you start, Ms. Weinstock, we're going to pause right here, and I'd like to turn the mic over to my colleague, Deputy Speaker Ayala, for a statement on Intro Number Four.
Not necessarily a statement, but I wanted to say hello, well, good morning to all of you, and thank you for coming to attending today's hearing on this very special matter. And I really wanted to thank ALI and the animal rights groups and ACC. I know that, you know, this has been very difficult, and it's been long overdue. When I initially heard about this crisis, I honestly didn't understand the scale. I thought it was okay, you know, this seems like a practical bill, we should do it. But I hadn't, I didn't really understand the magnitude of this situation. And while I would never, it would never occur to me to get a guinea pig as a comfort animal during the pandemic, a lot of people did, and that's a great thing, right? We all have, I have my little, I actually brought a little show and tell, because I have my little Charlie with me. Yes, I did, look. He's the first little doggie in the chamber. I know, say hi, guys. Say hi, it's my first hearing. He wants to make a statement, but we did, we heard so many stories from gardeners that were, you know, that they shared that people were taking the guinea pigs and throwing them, you know, over the gates because they couldn't no longer care for them. And I get it, right? My mom passed away this year, and I was, you know, looking for a comfort animal, you know, myself. I have three cats, I'm a cat mom, but I felt like I needed a little Charlie to walk with me and to really keep me sane, but Charlie is a pain in the butt. He gets up at 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning like a regular baby, right? He wants to be fed, he wants to use, it's a big responsibility, and unfortunately, right, we have work responsibilities, we have children. And now with the holidays coming up, I really want to caution families, right, to think it through. Adopt, adopt. We have so many animals in the shelter system already. Charlie was an adopted puppy in Puerto Rico, he's called a sato dog. He's actually legally blind, but he's the cutest, sweetest little baby. And, you know, and we want to make sure that he's okay, just like we want to make sure that all of these guinea pigs that are overrunning the animal, you know, care centers are taken care of. So thank you, Chair Schulman and Speaker Adams for, you want to, see? Charlie's become, he's everybody's comfort animal. And I brought him with me today because I've taken him to the office, because he's the office comfort animal, too. They do things for us, right? Animals are precious, and we love them, and we want to take care of them, but they require a lot of care and attention, and that is why this bill is so important. It isn't about preventing an individual's right to own a pet or to own a guinea pig, and if that's your pet of choice, then enjoy them and love them. But right now, we're at a point where we have so many of them, and they reproduce so quickly, and, you know, we need to do something. And so I'm happy to finally be hearing this, and thank you again for being here.
He smells of your cologne.
He smells of me, of his mama.
So now we're gonna, I don't know how you're gonna follow that up, but we're gonna go to Ms. Weinstock.
That is a tough act to follow.
Yeah, it is.
But thank you for having a prop for us. Good morning, Chairperson Schulman and Deputy Speaker Ayala. My name is Risa Weinstock, I'm the President and CEO of Animal Care Centers of New York City. Thank you for this opportunity to testify at today's hearing concerning proposed law to amend the Administrative Code of New York City with regard to pet shops. I would like to address the bill's main provision prohibiting the sale of guinea pigs. But before I address the particulars, just give me a few moments to give you a brief overview of ACC. We were established in 1995 and incorporated in New York State as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. We are dedicated to rescuing, caring for, and finding loving homes for New York City's homeless and abandoned animals, and we've been doing this for over 25 years. Our mission is to end animal homelessness in New York City. ACC is unique among all other welfare, animal welfare organizations in New York City in that we're the only organization that accepts every animal brought to it, whether the animal has been abandoned, surrendered, found as a stray, brought in by the public, brought in by NYPD, the Parks Department, or our own animal rescue team. And regardless of age, health, status, breed, species, or condition, we accept all animals. As the only open-admission animal sheltering organization in New York City, our annual intake exceeds that of any limited-admission facility or other shelter in all five boroughs. So far this year, ACC has taken in over 16,000 animals, including more than 14,000 dogs and cats, and in the same time period, we've received over 750 guinea pigs. In 2021, ACC, together with nearly 250 new hope partners and an active animal welfare community, we achieved a placement rate of 91% for these companion animals. Prior to the start of the pandemic, ACC, on average, took in about 300 guinea pigs each year. However, over the past 30 months, guinea pig intake has almost doubled. This growth has strained ACC in terms of the staff and resources needed to care and find placement for these animals. In an already overcrowded sheltering system, Intro 004 provides a pragmatic solution to the proliferation of stray and surrendered guinea pigs at ACC. Intake data has revealed the majority of guinea pigs coming into ACC starting in May 2021 were between the ages of six and nine months, indicating that they had been acquired by their owners between July and August of 2020. Many shelters did not have a generous supply of available pets for adoption after the big adoption-foster frenzy in the spring of 2020. However, the public was still seeking animal companionship and likely found that pet stores were the best option. Throughout the pandemic, many sought the comfort and companionship of a pet. Having a family pet can be a wonderful experience. However, many people mistake guinea pigs as starter pets. When ACC counsels adopters on the care and needs of any pet, we always make sure they understand the commitment involved, regardless of the pet's size. Just because a guinea pig is small doesn't mean it doesn't require extensive care. In particular, guinea pigs need an endless supply of food. They are known as graze animals, including fresh vegetables and hay. Guinea pigs require much more space to lead a physically and mentally healthy life than most people think. Guinea pigs are also considered exotics in the veterinary world, and New York City only has a handful of veterinarians who work with them. In fact, spaying or neutering a guinea pig is considered very costly and complicated surgery. In our experience, the guinea pigs sold in pet stores are not sterilized. Determining the sex of a guinea pig is also very difficult, which leads to males and females being sold together. This has resulted in surprise litters to unexpected consumers. Moreover, since the majority of guinea pigs come into ACC unaltered, we incur costs associated with sending them out to specialized veterinary centers for this surgery before we place them with partners or members of the public. ACC welcomes the efforts of city council to help control the overpopulation of pets in city shelters, including guinea pigs. As the third-largest species being surrendered and abandoned in New York City, it's imperative to take action to stop the source of guinea pigs into the city shelters. Thank you for your time and your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. So, you know what, I'm gonna take the privileges chair, too, since Diana was so personal in her experience. So I had a dog who passed away a few years ago. His name was Elvis. And he, I will say, my late partner and I got him at a pet store, but nobody wanted him because he had a crooked tail. So we were the only ones that wanted him. And at 10 years of age, he went, we had him trained as a safety dog, and as he went to, he went to hospitals and actually met with patients and all of that. So he was able to learn at 10 years. And I, right now, I don't have the time to take care of another dog, but I'm gonna get a rescue dog, and I would love to do that. I was even looking into fostering and things like that, because the animals are so much in need. And he was amazing. He lived, he was a West Highland Terrier. He lived to about 15, which is, which is old for a, a little bit old on it, for the terrier. So anyway, I just wanted to share that because I just, I remember him all the time, and he was, he was amazing. He was the therapy dog, I was looking for the word. And so, and he was just brought joy. We would go every weekend to a hospital, and he'd meet with patients, and it was amazing. So anyway, that said, after, so I'm gonna ask for the, after the pet shop laws went into effect in 2015, have you tracked a drop in dog, cat, or rabbit surrenders abandonment?
Nationally, intake is going down. Since that bill, we saw leveling off of rabbit intake, but what's happening now is our intake is starting to creep back up on, yes, on dogs and cats.
Would Intro, would Intro Four have a similar effect on guinea pig surrenders abandonment in terms of, you know, going down? Because I know initially it went down, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we think that it would level off. What we're seeing now is just a steady increase on intake of surrendered guinea pigs.
Abandoning animals is illegal. Have there been any investigations to identify who's responsible for abandoning large numbers of guinea pigs in buildings and parks?
Yeah, I'll take that. Thank you. Guinea pigs are, at times, found in parks and buildings, and I think we can safely say they were abandoned there as opposed to lost. If there are clues, NYPD will investigate, but my understanding is that's rarely the case. I know of one case this year where NYPD got involved after being alerted by ACC. They followed a lead but weren't able to identify the source.
So I have a question. Do, does the NYPD follow up on these cases? I mean, are they, are they really taking this seriously in terms of animal abandonment?
If they're alerted to, I spoke with the Animal Cruelty Investigation Squad. If they're alerted to a case and there's a lead, you know, camera footage, some kind of clue, they can follow up. They will do that, that's my understanding.
Let us know if there is an issue there in terms of follow-up. I know they have, they have a unit, right, that follows up on animal abuse and things like that?
There's a dedicated Animal Cruelty Investigation Squad, which is in the Detectives Bureau.
Okay.
And then, my understanding is precincts also will do their own investigations, but there's the dedicated.
But keep us posted, because we want to make sure that the administration follows up and does what it's supposed to do here, all right?
Agree.
Has the city done any education or outreach to inform the public of the laws around animal abandonment? That's one question. And the other question I have is, since, I've learned more about guinea pigs in the last couple of weeks than I've ever known, I want to know. By the way, there's only, I think, one or two vets, if I'm not mistaken, that do the spaying. In addition to that, is there an education process, just in general, not so much, not as, I know there is when people come into ACC and all of that, but is there an education process of what it means to take in a pet and the responsibilities and everything else?
I'll start with the education a bit, and then I'll hand it over to Risa for the counseling. In terms of informing the public, you know, park rangers will share information about not leaving pets in parks. And then I know ACC has a resource flyer that doesn't explicitly mention abandonment, but anyone who needs support caring for their pets can contact them. And the flyer includes a link to a form and a phone number for those who need to surrender their pets. But in terms of getting the message out, we'd be happy to work with council members to raise awareness among constituents about this issue.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Yeah.
And then with respect to surrenders or people who have guinea pigs and don't know what to do with them, we have a whole admissions process. If you want to surrender, you call and you make an appointment, you'll talk to a counselor. And so, the idea is that ACC is presenting itself as a resource to the community so that we can hopefully defer abandonment or just get past abandonment. People know that they can come to us, we're gonna do what's best for the animal in the end. And through that process, you get a lot of information about how to safely and humanely, if you can't take care of your pet, what we can do for you to help you continue or to, for us to take the pet in.
Yeah, my, before I ask my next question, I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Nausse. Oh, and I'm sorry, I didn't see it, and the last quiz. What I'm asking is, is there a way that we can inform, even through social media, which doesn't require paid advertising, of what it means, especially the holiday season, what it means not to abandon a pet, but what it means to take one in, like what the responsibilities are?
That's always part of our messaging. Certainly, if people are interested and they're going to come to the shelter or go online and start asking questions, there's always an application process. And we make sure that it is an interactive process, that we, we want people to keep their pets for the lifetime of the pet, and that's our goal. We don't want any homeless animals in New York City. So it's part of, once you step your foot into the adoption or foster process, that conversation begins immediately about what it takes to care for an animal.
Okay, no, thank you. The pet shop laws regulate the source of dogs and cats sold in pet shops, but not guinea pigs. Do we have good information about where commercially sourced guinea pigs come from?
We don't have that information, we don't track that.
What role, if any, does New York City Parks or other agencies that may come into contact with abandoned guinea pigs play in the rescue in city parks? And has collaboration between agencies been effective in addressing the issue?
So park rangers and others can bring guinea pigs to ACC. In terms of collaboration, I would say the issue seems to be not so much one of agency collaboration, but rather of the sheer number of guinea pigs that are being given up by members of the public. So most of ACC's guinea pigs are brought in directly by owners to ACC, and this is good, because it means they're not being abandoned. However, we need to decrease the number of guinea pigs needing shelter.
So what physical condition have abandoned guinea pigs been found in? And how many need immediate medical care?
Our experience is that they're, they come in all, all shapes and forms. There could be ones that need medical attention right away. Some of them have been found with ringworm, very contagious, you need to hop on that immediately. We've also, they're, they're not spayed, so we find they're pregnant. They're in all kinds of condition. I can't, I don't have the information about exactly what they are, but each, each guinea pig requires the attention of someone from our veterinary staff to take a look at them.
So while I realize that there's only a couple of veterinarians that do the spaying, any vet can actually take care of their other medical conditions?
Yeah, generally, just checking the health and, you know, and the safety and the condition that the, that the guinea pig is in, we're absolutely able to do that. But the surgery is so specialized that we have to send them out to a specialist.
Okay. What are the costs of keeping a guinea pig in an ACC shelter?
So I want to, I want to talk a little bit, not, we don't have a specific cost per guinea pig, but it's really about resources and how much a guinea pig, no matter how small it is relative to a dog or a cat, how many resources that animal takes. And so it's food, it's housing, it's cleaning, it's staff time, it's making sure that they have enrichment, it's keeping them separate, because it's really hard to determine the sex of a guinea pig so that they don't reproduce in the shelter. So it's a drain on the resources in that it takes so much time, and I think there's a misperception that because they're so small, they're so easy to take care of, which is not the case.
We've heard of the $20,000 guinea pig tower. But does, does ACC have a total cost associated with the increase in guinea pig surrenders since May of 2020?
I don't have the total cost, and the tower is something that we tried. It's state-of-the-art housing. I mean, we're getting so many, we have to think of ideas and ways to keep them humanely housed. We don't have any plans to buy another tower. You know, that had a lot of good attributes in terms of how many you can house. We don't have...
Do you have questions? So, you know what, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they'd like to ask any questions now, and I'll come back later.
I think, so are we seeing a comparable number of rabbits that are coming into the ACC system, or is it just guinea pigs?
We still have rabbits coming in, but it's really leveled off. We don't see big spikes, the way the guinea pigs are really moving upward, and it's not changing. It's going up. And we also see that a lot of them are being surrendered after about a year, or a little, you know, a year or two, which is a little troubling, because I think that, that shows you that people are getting them just for sort of a short-term, I need a little pet, and that's, that's not how we would counsel the adoption of a guinea pig.
Yeah. I mean, I've heard, I've heard, I've heard from many people who actually love guinea pigs. They think that they're like, you know, the cutest little critters ever, and they are, but they take a lot of work. They do, they take a lot of work. Are you, so, understanding the sterilization challenges, are you able to sterilize all of the guinea pigs prior to adoption?
That is a challenge, because we rely on outside vet services. And so, there could be three weeks before we can get an appointment. It's not easy to get an appointment. Like I said, they're, they're considered exotics, and that unfortunately increases how long the guinea pig has to stay in the shelter. And then, if we can get them out unaltered, we work with the partners who take them to hopefully get them altered. That surgery is a tough one. I know someone's gonna testify about it, and it gives you more insight into why we really need to control the population of guinea pigs.
Has ACC ever had a specialist on board, a staff member, a doctor, right, a veterinarian that was assigned to that level of care? Or is this something that... Or is this something that?
In, in my tenure, and I've been at ACC for over 10 years, I don't recall a specialist. I do think at some point we were able to do surgery on guinea pigs. Here's what's going on across the nation. There's a shortage of veterinarians, and we're struggling just to keep pace with dogs and cats. And this is a specialized surgery that takes a lot more time and, and detail. So we don't really have the resources to devote to the guinea pigs, and it is a highly-trained veterinarian that needs to do it.
Yeah, it's really about creating the workforce, and I think we're seeing that in a lot of places in New, in New York City, a lot of agencies, hospitals, you know, healthcare facilities, where we just don't have the staffing ratios that we need to adequately, you know, be able to do our job. So because of that challenge, then if I'm coming into ACC to adopt a guinea pig, am I allowed to adopt one guinea pig or two?
You can adopt two guinea pigs.
But then how, who makes the distinction?
Well, they would be the same sex.
Okay. And how do you determine that? Because my understanding is this is very difficult.
Yeah, that's not easy either. But to the extent that our vets are able to identify same-sex, like maybe there are obvious ones, and I don't want to speak, I'm not, I'm not a vet, so, and I don't want to diminish how difficult it, that the job is. But I think that there are some guinea pigs who we know are male or female, and, and we would only adopt out same-sex pairs.
Wow. And, and a, and a separate note, because I know, you know, I'm also concerned about an increase of surrenders to, you know, dogs and cats. Throughout the pandemic, we suspended, I know that the ASPCA suspended the spay and neuter program temporarily, the mobile spay and neuter program. Are there any, any facilities that are currently doing that at low cost rates to families that may not be able to afford to, to, you know, to go to a private practice?
Is this specifically for guinea pigs or just?
No.
Animals generally?
Animals.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we work with a lot of local vets for low-cost spay-neuter. The ASPCA does a lot of spay-neuter for us. The pandemic really slowed things down. But again, there's, there's definitely backlog, and it's national, it's not just New York City. There is a real shortage of veterinarians, and not just veterinarians, but people who work in vet services. You need, you need veterinary support as well as the doctor to do the surgeries. It's, there are, there are low-cost options in New York City. It's just that there is a backlog.
Yeah. And in terms of, I just want to piggyback off of a question that Councilmember Schulman asked regarding advertisement and really, like, what is the, the messaging, right, around adoption, responsible adoption? Citywide, specifically leading up to like, you know, Christmas, and, you know, I know that during Easter, right, we see a spike in interest in, in parents getting puppies and kittens and, you know, all sorts of animals for their children as presents. Is there some sort of public campaign that helps, you know, to better inform the community about the, the impact of adoption, right, well, of, of purchasing an animal?
So we currently have a social media campaign, that's my marketing director, about gifting animals during the holiday season. And in terms of a, a campaign to educate people, for us, it's so important, I know, Councilmember Ayala, you've been to the shelter.
Yeah.
You have to step into ACC to understand what animal adoption is all about. And so the campaign that we put out there is giving people information about why you should adopt and all the great animals that we have. And once we pique your interest, the conversation begins with, this is what's involved. And then there are different types of animals or different level of animals of, you know, size, behavior, et cetera, that will suit what you need. And so the best education is a conversation right there about what this will entail. And sometimes people say, I need to think about it, which is really great, instead of just like coming in and, you know, picking on an animal and leaving. And then we really want to make sure that this is going to last and that this is going to be a healthy choice for the human and the animal.
Yeah. The last time I was there, there wasn't, there was a Charlie there that wanted to adopt me.
This is true.
My husband, yeah, at the time I had two, I had, I had my two pups who unfortunately have passed since, and my husband threatened me if I brought in another animal, he would leave. But most definitely, I remember. It was interesting because Mark Levine passed by the same dog, and the dog didn't react. And as soon as I stepped, I don't want to say I'm not saying anything, but as soon as I stood next to him, he went crazy. But thank you guys for all that you do. I'm going to leave you in, in really good hands. I have a public housing hearing across the street, and as you understand, they have a lot of challenges as well, specifically around heating season. But I want to thank you for all of the work that you do, not only around this, you know, issue, but around the multitude of, you know, of issues that you face day in and day out. And I know that, you know, you're doing a lot of work with limited resources. And I, you know, I lost two of my, my, my dogs, the two dogs that I, that I lost. ACC was very, very good to us because I, when, when, when I called her Kuka, I found her. She was a, a mix, I say, I think Kuka was a mix between a squirrel and a chihuahua. And she was the cutest thing, at least I thought so. She, 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 she was very elderly and started, you know, seizing during the pandemic, and it got like really, really bad, and we had to put her down, and there was nowhere to go. And ACC was kind enough to, to take her in and, and, you know, help us through that process, which was very, very difficult. So thank you, you know, so much for that. It really meant a lot to my family and I. So thank you all, and I, I leave you in good hands.
Thank you, Speaker Ayala, very much. And where's your little one? Oh, there he is. The little one's leaving too. Let him say goodbye to everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, look at that, look at that.
He's so smart, but he's so bad. Don't, don't let his little face.
He doesn't really bite. He puts his finger in his mouth, he doesn't do anything. Councilmember Nausse, do you want to ask any questions?
Good morning. I really appreciate, oh, I was not, but you heard me, right? Yeah, so my house has been a zoo, between my cousin and my house, I mean, in my house. Then my children always picking what they want. I don't want this, I don't, up to now, I'm still, you know, going through the process. My daughter just opened my eyes on babysitting. I didn't know that you can babysit dogs for different folks. So now saying, I told her, I don't think I'm going to pay, but she managed to know how to get a dog every two or three weeks to go and babysit. So I appreciate the work that you're doing. That's, that's the bottom line. My question in term of guinea pig, what is the course of sheltering a guinea pigs in the shelter system?
I don't have an exact dollar amount per guinea pig. And again, it goes back to just resources generally. What we do is we look at the root cause. Our mission is to end animal homelessness in New York City. The number of stray and surrendered, and particularly surrendered animals that are guinea pigs that are coming in, there's a problem there. They each take a level of care, just like a dog, just like a cat. It's cleaning, it's feeding, it's housing, you know. So I don't, I don't have it broken down by animal, but just, again, because they're small, it's not, they're taking as much resources from our team as a cat is taking or a rabbit is taking.
Yeah. What percentage is that of the animals shelters? Like if you say in total, what's the percentage you would say roughly, if you have a pig, a guinea pig, or you have a dog?
So we currently have cats and dogs combined annually this year is about 14,000. And the total for guinea pigs this year looks like it will get close to 1,000. We're, we're nearly at 800 as of, as of today.
I believe my colleague just led her to it about having a, a way of communicating with the, especially the young folks. Let me see, the people that's not getting paid, that don't have a paycheck are the one that want the, all the animals and all the exoticism of the time. So now we, the parents, would like to know that how much it costs, not just oops at the end. So is that a way that we can communicate in that?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Like to say how much it will cost actually to, to have a guinea pig in your house, a monthly?
Oh, if you adopt, if you adopt?
Yes.
A guinea pig?
Yes.
What would it cost?
And to maintain it?
And to ma, well.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I can get back to you with that. We can figure out like how much they eat on average, and they use specialized hay, the housing, we can get you those numbers.
The way I see it, I'm going to keep my cat.
The cost involved, obviously, you know, there's, but offhand, I wouldn't be able to tell you, but we can get you that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Yes.
Been joined by Councilmember Yeager. Do you have any questions, Councilmember? Okay, so I want to follow up about my colleague, Councilmember Nausse. So is there a way to educate kids in the schools about what it would mean for them to, you know, because kids, to, to her point, you know, kids always want an animal, they don't realize the extent of the obligation and all of that. Is there a way to maybe get that into the schools as to what that means?
Absolutely. And we have a humane education program. We're rolling, the pandemic sort of sidelined it for a bit, but we're rolling it back out. Guinea pigs will absolutely be up there. And again, you know, I know we're talking about guinea pigs, but really, it's the.
In general.
The core, care of any animal and about adoption. And so that is a program that we are investing in.
If there's any way that we could be helpful in that too, because we all have districts where we have school, the schools, and I think that would be a nice thing to do, and what that means, and actually even talk to kids about fostering or working with their families and things like that. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stress amongst the students now post-COVID, so maybe that's a way to work on that.
Absolutely.
So how far, how many guinea pigs have been adopted through ACC?
To date, we have adopted close to 200. And then we also work with the rescue community, what we call New Hope Partners, and they have taken from us over 500.
Okay, that's great. Do adoptees bring the guinea pigs back to the shelter? I don't know if it's too soon to figure that out, but.
That, yeah, I don't know that specifically, but I will say that anyone who adopts any animal from us, if, we're always in touch, if there's any issue, and if they want to surrender, you know, we'll work, is it resources, is it, it's just so costly? Like then we learn from that because then it says to us, well, we didn't give them enough information, or what, what's the situation that you're in, how can we help you? And many times, we'll try and find a solution. So I don't know that specifically. I can look back and get you that answer.
Okay.
But I, I do know though, just looking at our intake data, that owner surrender generally, not knowing if they were adopted from ACC, but owner surrender is much higher than stray. So it's definitely an education issue and just an availability of guinea pigs, and people are not being, not thinking about them for a lifelong pet.
Okay. And maybe there's a way with DOHMH to talk about even illnesses that the pets get or what people have to look out for, because I know there was something just recently about dog flu and things like that, and maybe there's a way we can just educate folks too in terms of taking care of the pet and combine those. I have no further questions, so I want to thank you all very much, and we really appreciate the testimony. I do want to also say that in, in my previous role, working in the Speaker's office before I came, became a council member, I visited ACC because I had health care under my, as part of my agencies that I had to oversee. And so you do a lot with, with few resources, and we can talk about some other things and what we can do to, you know, make that better. And I also put money in this, this fiscal year's budget for a place in Queens, because there really isn't a place in Queens in terms of bringing the animals. And so anyway, thank you very much, and.
Chair? I just want to make a correction, since my cat is my baby, I can't be, he's dog-sitting, thank you.
That's the, I want to make sure the correction is made, because they're my baby, but that's not everybody's baby, so, dog-sitting.
Before you go, we're just, there's, my colleague, Councilmember Hudson, is chairing a, a hearing. We're going to see if she just has any questions, and then.
She's going to run over.
Okay, just give us a minute, we'll just take a minute. Thank you. So I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Hudson, and Councilmember, would you like to ask any questions of the panel?
I don't have any questions at the time.
Nope, okay. Okay, with that, then, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much to the members of the administration. We will now turn to testimony from the public. I'd like to remind everyone that I will call up individuals in panels, and all testimony will be limited to two minutes. We will be strictly enforcing that time limit due to the number of people that have registered to testify, so please try to stick to it as best you can. As a reminder, you can submit written testimony, and we, as the committee staff, review it in full. You can submit testimony up to the record, up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing, by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. We will hear in-person panels first, with the possibility of, we will go to in-person panels first and then move to a remote panel, and then proceed as mixed going forward. The first in-person panel will be Allie Taylor from Voters for Animal Rights, Libby Post from New York State Animal Protection Federation, Elizabeth Cabrera-Holz from World Animal Protection U.S., Macy Silvin from the ASPCA, and Lyle Cleary from the Center for Avian and Exotic Medicine.
I also want to remind the, the panelists that testimony, we're going to limit testimony to two minutes. If it's, if you can summarize, if you have long testimony, please do that and then submit it to us. We have a, a lot of people that want to testify today, and we want to make sure that we get to everybody. You can proceed whenever you are ready.
Good morning. My name is Allie Taylor, and I'm the president of Voters for Animal Rights, or V-FAR, in New York City. Thank you Speaker Adams, Chairperson Schulman, and the Committee on Health for holding today's hearing. Thank you to Deputy Speaker Ayala for your leadership on the bill, and to the 34 council members who have co-sponsored Intro IV. We recognize and appreciate that this is the first piece of animal protection legislation taken up by the New City Council, and we're grateful to you for prioritizing this time-sensitive matter. I also want to thank the animal advocates testifying today, and to remind all of us that while I understand that there are many animal issues that we care about deeply, today's hearing is focusing specifically on guinea pigs, so let's all please be respectful of the council's time by staying on topic. I want to give some background on how this bill came to be. In the fall of 2021, our colleagues at ACC came to us for help with brainstorming ideas on how to stop the increasing and untenable influx of hundreds of guinea pigs surrendered annually to the shelters. We knew from our experience working on stopping puppy mills that pet stores would never volunteer to do the right thing and stop selling guinea pigs as merchandise. We agreed that legislative action, like the successful 2014 law that banned the sale of rabbits in New York City pet stores, is the only means to a true permanent solution. Pet stores who sell guinea pigs for around $50 have openly admitted that they don't provide vet care for illnesses, injuries, or spay-neuter because this would cut into their profit margins. Pet stores will sell guinea pigs to anyone who walks through the door, as their motivation is to sell their inventory as quickly as possible. Guinea pigs are impulse buys. Because they are sensitive animals with complex needs, people often surrender. people often surrender them after the novelty wears off, creating a crisis in our city's animal shelters and rescues. Additionally, New Yorkers have been abandoning guinea pigs in city parks, which is a death sentence for the animals. They cannot survive in the wild and will either starve to death or be attacked by predators. By contrast, when guinea pigs are adopted out to individuals. Okay, by contrast, when guinea pigs are adopted out to individuals or families from shelters or rescues, potential adopters are carefully screened to ensure that they have the time, resources, lifestyle, and support to provide a loving forever home. Shelters and rescues also provide education so that adopters understand how to care for their animals and to provide an environment for the guinea pig to thrive in. They are adopted out to homes where they feel confident that the adopter understands that this is a commitment for the lifetime of the guinea pig. Therefore, they are far less likely to be surrendered to a shelter in the future. Vfar is proud to support Intro IV, which represents a critical step towards ensuring that all companion animals have safe homes while also reducing the burden on our overwhelmed shelter system. This bill is common sense humane legislation, and we urge the City Council to move swiftly on the bill, as any delay will only increase the number of unwanted guinea pigs. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Libby Post. I'm the Executive Director of the New York State Animal Protection Federation. I represent all the animal shelters in the state of New York. I'm here to talk about the impact of the sale of guinea pigs on the city's shelter system, the Animal Care Center of New York, which is one of the federation's members. Guinea pigs are coming into ACC at an unprecedented rate, as we already heard. In 2020, they recorded 357 guinea pigs coming into their care from January to November. In 2022, during that same time, they took in 777. That's a 117% increase. They're now, the, guinea pigs are now the third largest species coming into ACC in terms of numbers, not size. And while ACC rescue partners try to help by pulling as many as they can, they too are overwhelmed. It's not just that stores are breeding and selling the guinea pigs, it's time, it's that they're selling guinea pigs unaltered and often with their sex mislabeled. According to testimony before this committee of April 30th, 2014, PetSmart stated that they can't source sterilized guinea pigs, and the cost of sterilizing in-store would be prohibitive. Unsuspecting consumers are bringing home pairs of guinea pigs sold the same sex, only to find out 60 days later, they purchased a male and a female. And guinea pigs can mate every two months. And so many times, owners have stated that they're unable to return their guinea pigs to stores, so ACC is the only option, and at this point, ACC is, as we know, overrun. There is momentum among New Yorkers to create a more humane community. The New York State Legislature passed the Puppy Mill Pipeline Bill, sponsored by the city's own State Senator Michael Gianaris and Assemblymember Linda Rosenthal. The bill will end the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet stores. Banning the sale of guinea pigs in pet stores in New York City is a simple and effective way to stop the influx at its source. We must continue to increase adoptions and encourage people to adopt, not shop, but we also need to address the root cause of pet overpopulation in shelters. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today, and I hope that you vote yes on this and move this forward, because it'll be a consequential bill in moving New York City's record as a humane city forward. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Lyle Cleary from the Center for Avian and Exotic Medicine. We are one of the three hospitals in the city that do exclusively exotics. I love my job, but there's two surgeries that make me question my life choices, and one of them is a guinea pig spay. If you look at the diagram I provided, number 12, that is our little ovary. But to get to it, you have to basically hold the giant water balloon, that's number 11, which is the sebum. It's kind of like trying to get a piece of gum out of the bottom of your, the inside of your shoe while there's a full water balloon there without popping it. Pretty unpleasant. Cost of this to consumers is about $600 to $800 for the spay. At best, we do help out the ACC, where I think it's usually like $200, $250 per pig. Unlike dogs and cats, where it's very easy to put in a catheter, intubate them, make anesthesia safer, it's really, really hard with these guys. Most of the time, we have to settle for a mask, which does work pretty well, but not as ideal. There are less than 10 veterinarians in all five boroughs that can spay a guinea pig. Even in a hospital like Catnip and Carrots, where they only do small mammals and cats, they don't spay guinea pigs. Only two or three of the five vets at my hospital spay guinea pigs. It's unpleasant. Post-operatively, that is where you get a lot of issues. Many of them go into GI stasis. If they stop eating, their gut shuts down, they shut down, they die. Even in an ACC setting, like, that's about, every eight hours, if you're doing a syringe feeding, that's about one man hour per pig for the, up to a week post-op when they're not eating. That's a lot of time. That's a lot, it's not an easy outpatient surgery like a dog and cat spay where you send them home the same day. It is intensive care. We don't even send them out the same day unless we know exactly what, well, unless it's like a shelter that we know can handle it, or otherwise, we keep them in hospital.
I want you to, just keep, it's important, so just keep going.
Okay, awesome, thanks. If they give birth after six months of age, they are prone to dystocias, which, you know, that's a $1,200, $2,500 surgery. And emergent, animals die, not just the babies. You know, they're highly prolific. Accidental births lead to more accidental births. You talked about the 20 pigs found in Staten Island. That was probably, they might have had those pigs as few as nine months. It's, you know, one accidental birth, everyone keeps everyone, they're breeding again. The females, if you don't spay them, are prone to ovarian cysts. A recent study showed that anywhere from 50% to 60% of all guinea pigs in a large retrospective study had reproductive pathology. That's tumors, ovarian cysts, endometritis, all sorts of stuff. Basically means, we really got to spay them. It is hard to spay them if they're under six months old, but, you know, in the first, like, they can breed as soon as four or five months, just because their ligaments just haven't stretched out, just makes the space so much harder. Yeah, the cysts basically do end up killing most intact female guinea pigs. They require a special diet and care that, time and time again, the, you know, 16-year-old at Petco just isn't telling these owners. I, you know, yes, it's making more work for me, my hospital's more profitable, because like, there's all these mistakes, but honestly, it's just not worth it to these animals. You know, they're impulse buys. People think they're starter pets, and they're not a starter pet. They are far from it. Most of the ones we see right out of the store, there's like, they're, they have been shipped across country, highly stressed, young animals. They have ringworm, a lot of them have respiratory infections, you know, we have to take out eyes every now and then because they have really bad corneal ulcers. They just come in in the worst state, and owners are given like, you know, a bag of like junk food pellets and said, oh yeah, feed them a banana a day, and that can kill them. Because there's only three hospitals in the five boroughs that do exclusively exotics, there's a lot of room for really bad care on the veterinary side. A dog and, a vet who sees mostly dogs and cats, which is 95% of all veterinarians, them seeing a guinea pig is like them seeing a horse. Really not appropriate, in my opinion. Like, yeah, basic stuff, they can help and give a kind of idea, but time and time again, I see referrals from other hospitals where the owners just haven't been told the right things. They don't even know about spaying, and they don't know, they give them antibiotics that frankly can kill them, whereas like dogs and cats drink it up like water. It is such different medicine, highly specialized, and it's not available to everyone. And frankly, I can understand why most vets don't do it. You, like, in exotics, you make 20% to 30% less than you do in dog and cat. So it's not exactly as viable. But yeah, I mean, they, they're just not starter pets. They're animals that are just, you know, tend to be really skittish. They are prey species. Being around dogs and cats, like, just will even put them into stasis. I've seen some go into cardiac arrest just from the scent of them. So even doing these spays and neuters in a shelter setting, they don't always go well. Just because like, I mean, yeah, they sometimes just have strokes, like, coming out of surgery just because of the high stress, they smell a predator, and they go into like a little flight-flight syncopal episode. But yeah, hopefully, this is a wake-up call. The city starts getting this under control finally.
Thank you very much. Should I wait for the panel to ask questions? Okay, after, after everyone speaks, I have a couple of questions, so we'll wait for them. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Macy Silvin. I'm a Government Relations Manager for the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. On behalf of the ASPCA, I'd like to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala for introducing Intro IV, and Health Committee Chair Schulman for the opportunity to testify this morning. The ASPCA has served New York City for over 150 years, and you can find information about our New York programs and services in our submitted testimony. The ASPCA works very closely with and strongly supports Animal Care Centers of New York to help advance their efforts to reduce euthanasia, increase adoptions and placement, and improve access to care for the city's most vulnerable animals. Since 2017, ACC has maintained a placement rate of more than 90%, making New York City one of the nation's leaders in the placement of dogs, cats, and rabbits among high-intake shelters. Ensuring that ACC is the resource necessary to continue this critical lifesaving work remains a priority for our organization. The passage of Intro IV would help prevent guinea pigs from overburdening our shelters and rescues, and encourage the adoption of guinea pigs from ACC. From the start of the pandemic to the introduction of this bill in February, ACC shelters have taken in over 1,000 guinea pigs. This year alone, 600 have entered the shelter system, more than double pre-pandemic numbers. Of these, most are under three years old, indicating they were pandemic purchases. 61% were originally purchased from a pet store, and the vast majority of them were not sterilized, since pet stores and owners often forego sterilization. Guinea pigs reproduce in significant numbers in short periods of time, resulting in unwanted litters that are commonly dumped in the city's shelters and parks. This population surge has forced ACC to invest over $20,000 in infrastructure. At the same time that they're facing significant challenges with increased dog and cat populations, space shortages, and increased funding needs, we need to make sure that ACC can maintain and enhance their levels of service to the public, and this legislation serves as an important step toward meeting this essential goal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liz Cabrera-Holtz, and I'm an attorney and campaign manager at World Animal Protection. I'm speaking today about the cruel conditions in which guinea pigs are bred, so where these guinea pigs are coming from before they arrive at pet stores. Consumers rarely think about where the guinea pig they purchased came from, but the answer is disturbing. Virtually all animals sold in pet stores, from small stores to big box stores like PetSmart and Petco, come from commercial breeding facilities referred to as mills, in which pain and suffering are rampant. In mills, the goal is to produce as many animals as cheaply as possible. Animals are kept in stressful, crowded, unsanitary conditions, and ill and injured animals receive little to no veterinary care. While the Federal Animal Welfare Act does regulate guinea pig mills, it provides minimal protections and is chronically underenforced. Mills regulated by the Animal Welfare Act have long track records of poor animal care. Holmes Farm in Pennsylvania is just one example that illustrates the suffering guinea pigs in Durin Mills. Holmes Farm housed more than 15,000 animals, supplying guinea pigs and other small mammals to pet stores, including PetSmart and Petco. At Holmes Farm, sick animals or those deemed unfit for sale were killed with carbon dioxide or left to die in freezers, even as some tried to escape. The U.S. Department of Agriculture inspection reports documented numerous Animal Welfare Act violations, such as decomposing animals, filthy cages, cannibalization, and the animals in desperate need of veterinary care. Those animals included guinea pigs whose bodies were covered in scabs and whose eyes were crusted shut. Holmes Farm is an unusual, Sun Pet Limited, another Petco and PetSmart supplier, and is still in operation, supplies, has numerous Animal Welfare Act violations going back years. In one document, in one inspection report, the USDA documented severely ill animals, filth-encrusted tanks, and animals unable to access drinking water. In this single report, the inspector also reported 22 hamster enclosures had cannibalism occurring in them. According to the American Veterinary Medical Association, which conducts the most comprehensive survey of households with companion animals in the U.S., the number one source of guinea pigs purchased as companions is brick and mortar pet stores, meaning this bill would take a significant step toward shutting down these mills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, one, I had a question. Dr. Cleary, is there, I know about the, what you talked about the spaying, but is there birth control for guinea pigs?
So people did experiment with a Deserolyn implant. It's about $700, $800 per implant. It only lasts six months, and it doesn't even prevent the ovarian cysts, unfortunately.
So there's no, there's no, like, medication or anything? Okay.
No. I mean, hey, if you wanted to do a Deserolyn implant every six months, but most owners, if they're not going to spay them, probably won't do that. And you can still get the uterine, the ovarian cyst, which is what kills most females.
Right. And what, and I know it's difficult to tell this sex. Why is that?
You know, they fool even me. Sometimes they're, I mean, they're fast-growing. It's, you know, before the balls drop on the boys, sometimes the peanut, like, you know, you have a, it's a spectrum sometimes. There's, like, you're, it's kind of an art, and even then I get it wrong. It's just, you know, there's no external testicles, there's no, I mean, you don't really have much of a penis on them, like, that's within, so it's not like you're seeing it hanging out there. It's not obvious, even to us who do it every day.
Thank you. And I also want to, I want to, I want to give a shout out to Voters for Animal Rights and Ali Taylor. I want everyone to know that they are a purely volunteer organization that do a tremendous amount of work. I've worked with Ali, oh, look at that. I've worked with, I've worked with Ali for a very long time. I don't even know, I thought you might have met Elvis, my daughter, because I ran in 2009. Elvis was still alive, and he was actually a big part of my campaign. So I, I just want to say that because, and she and I talk all the time, and we talk about not just this, but other things. I also want to tell you that I am committed to making sure that whatever we have to go through logistically in terms of the council, that we will get this to the floor to a vote as soon as we can, at the first possible moment that we can do that. So I want to make that commitment here. And so, and I want to, I want to thank the panel. I appreciate it. We appreciate your testimony, and we want to thank you for coming in here today. Oh, I want to, I'm sorry, I also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by my colleague, Councilmember Feliz. Do you have any questions?
No, that was Tom.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're gonna, before we go to the next panel, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay? okay? All right.
All right, at this time, we ask if you could please find your seats. We are going to resume the hearing. If everybody can please find their seats, thank you.
We will now call the second in-person panel. It will be Brian Hackett from Animal Legal Defense Fund, Alexandria Lafata from Vegan Muse, Megan Licari from Puppy Kitty New York City, Brian Shapiro from the Humane Society, and Cindy Stratz from Bunnies &amp; Beyond. You may begin when ready.
Good morning. My name is Brian Hackett. I'm the Legislative Affairs Manager for the Animal Legal Defense Fund. On behalf of our members and supporters throughout the five bureaus, I just wanted to thank the committee and the council and Speaker Adams for entertaining this hearing and this very important discussion about this crisis facing the city. And of course, our organization is in support of the legislation. On a personal level, I wanted to thank and recognize the tremendous staff at the New York ACC for their dedication and hard work in the midst of tremendous challenges facing animal shelters throughout the country. I'm a proud parent of quite a few adopted animals from New York ACC, so it all holds a very special place in my heart, and I just wanted to personally, publicly acknowledge that. Because so much has already been stated as to the merit, merits of and the need for this legislation, I'd rather just briefly make note about animal protection legislation like this and respectfully encourage the council to consider entertaining legislation that helps protect animals that's so broadly supported by the city and just makes sense on a financial, political, and a social position and standpoint. Animal protection legislation, whether it be the Puppy Mill Pipeline Bill before Governor Hochul, or this piece of legislation, or so many other examples, really have the ability to bring communities together because animals garner so much support, whether they be cats or dogs, or, you know, guinea pigs or horses, or any other type of animal. So, with that, I just want to thank the council and thank Speaker Adams for entertaining this and extend the appreciation of our members to all of you. Thank you.
Next.
Dear Chairperson Schulman and Honorable Committee Members, my name's Brian Shapiro, New York State Director for the Humane Society of the United States, representing our members and supporters in New York City, and speaking in favor of Intro IV. Animal shelters across New York State are facing unprecedented challenges in accepting ever-increasing numbers of companion animals surrendered by the public. New York City Animal Care Centers is no exception, with a 117% intake increase since 2020. In particular, the HSUS has tracked the shocking increase of guinea pig intakes at ACC, and we've even seen rescues outside of the city attempting to assist with this overflow of small, cheap, and unaltered animals that originate from New York City itself. Many are abandoned in city parks, as was noted, where they will die. These lively, high-maintenance animals may be purchased for what is often less than the average price of a single beer in New York City. This legislation would implement protection similar to a law passed by the City Council in 2014 addressing the sale of rabbits within city limits. This law was put in place to help ACC cope with the deluge of rabbit surrenders impacting the organization. The HSUS supports similar action now to help ACC weather this storm and respectfully urges the Committee on Health to pass Intro IV. This legislation is also supported by our affiliate organization, the Humane Society Veterinary Medical Association, HSVMA, and their letter of support is included for your consideration. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information and for your service to this wonderful city.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name's Megan Licari, and I'm president of Puppy Kitty New York City. Thank you allowing me the opportunity to testify today. On May 5th, I was alerted to a situation in Elmhurst, Queens of a guinea pig running through the brush on the side of a road via a Facebook group post. When we headed over and started to look through the bushes, we kept finding more and more guinea pigs. We had to chase them through the thick brush, and we were able to rescue eight animals that day. It was very difficult for them and for us, as they were hiding in drain holes and heavy brush. One actually died likely due to stress. They were terrified and starving, and it was clear that they were dumped in this location with little chances at survival. Most people get guinea pigs from stores not really realizing how quickly they can reproduce and how fragile they are. It is around $500 for me to neuter a pet who, it's around $500 to neuter a pet who was purchased on a whim for $50. I have neutered all the males at $500. Several of those guinea pigs have also became ill, and we had to hospitalized them for over $1,000. This is not financially feasible for most people or privately-funded rescues like Puppy Kitty New York City. People don't realize the care they require. They're actually quite costly to feed, feeding hay pellets and fresh veggies. It's also important for them to get enrichment. They are also a prey species, so it's not natural for them to like being held. Getting them used to being held takes a long time and socialization. People who, people who usually purchase guinea pigs are for their children, who want a pet that they can hold. When they realize they don't like to be held, they often become neglected and in small, left in small cages. We have taken many owner-surrendered guinea pigs that are in horrible conditions with overgrown nails and filthy cages. I am one of 15 New Hope Partners who take guinea pigs. I have not been able to take many animals this year because I have so many of my own. Also, they are no longer just able to sterilize them before pulling them like they do with cats and dogs. Guinea pigs are a huge financial burden on my small rescue. Adoption rates are low because people see them in stores, and they likely don't realize the crisis. They are usually impulse buys, which should never be the case when adopting a pet. Also, when adopting, there's a screening process and education process, which is super important. This has not happened at pet stores. It's not right that pet stores are profiting, and then small rescues like myself have to clean up the mess. As a city, we must do better. Thank you for considering this bill.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. I'm Alexandria Lafata, president of Vegan Muse, garden of Venus lobbyist and activist. I have lobbied for many laws in New York, with nearly all of them focused on animal welfare alongside voters for animal rights. The size of guinea pigs contributes to the cruelty they endure for reasons that are worth noting. There is a widespread misconception that an animal's body size correlates to its capacity for to its capacity for intelligence, ability to feel emotions, and process pain. Though they are tiny, guinea pigs are exceptionally clever, sensitive, and aware. Their petite size also means that they are specifically marketed by the pet industry as both cute and easy to care for. Somebody who has had guinea pigs, they are cute, but they are not quite easy to care for. The small-natured guinea pigs is exploited by the peopling industry to feed a relentless cycle of breeding, marketing, and sales. Some are lucky enough to end up in loving homes, but many are abandoned to the wilds where they are prey animals or surrendered to an already-overwhelmed shelter system. The often-danced-around aspect of pet breeding is the mother herself, who isn't often talked about in these hearings. Guinea pig pregnancies are difficult by nature as their babies are born with fur. They're ready to run, and they're large in size compared to their mother. Pregnant guinea pigs can suffer from prolapsed uterus, hypocalcemia, dysbiosis, and pregnancy ketosis, which is blood poisoning. If a female guinea pig begins her first pregnancy after she is eight months old, there is a high chance of dysbiosis where the bones are fused together. She cannot deliver unaided by humans. Their survival rate of cesarean surgeries for guinea pigs is extremely low. Allowing the exploitation of these tiny but sentient animals who already have high-risk pregnancies for profit in New York City is unnecessarily cruel, especially when many ultimately have lackluster fates. Thank you.
Thank you. Last panelist.
Hello. Thank you for having me testify today. My name is Cindy Stutz, and I'm the founder of Bunnies &amp; Beyond. I have said to many people that the animals that end up at animal care centers are lucky ones because we have no idea how many are out there sitting rotting in cages that parents bought for their kid. Novelty wears off, and that animal just sits there. I've seen guinea pigs, as of course rabbits, come into the shelter with their legs burning off, their belly's fur, the fur's gone. They've been sitting in their own excrement for God knows how long, and those are the lucky ones. How many are out there right now, as we're sitting here, that are dying slow, painful deaths from that or starving to death? I've seen that, too. I can't tell you how many I've held as they died in my arms, and I couldn't help them because it was too late. So I know the bans work because it worked when Giuliani's administration passed it on ferrets and snakes and that. And then with the rabbits, it has made a huge difference. And that's all I can say, is just please, I hope we can get this passed.
Yes, and I stated earlier that I made a commitment that we'll get this as soon as we can. There's some processes in the council. But as soon as we can do it, and I've expressed that also to the speaker's office, and so we will do that. That's number one. Number two is that earlier, when ACC and folks were here for DOHMH, I talked about us educating kids in the schools because a lot of these are impulses by kids that just want to have these. I didn't know until you testified just now that they didn't like to be held. I didn't know about that.
They're prey animals.
So all of this points just more and more to us needing to get this done, and we will get it done as quickly as possible. And I so appreciate all of you coming here to testify today and for all the work that you do beyond that. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be remote, and it will be virtual. And it will be Herve Brayol from Woodstock Farm Sanctuary, Stephen Gruber from Mayor's Alliance for New York City's Animals, Eleonora Mulbegat from the Humane Society of New York, Dr. Ellen Crane from Safe Haven Farm Sanctuary, and Eliza Trinidad. Herve Brayol, you may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Starting time.
Sorry, Herve, one second. You're muted. Hold on. Okay, now you may begin.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chairperson Schulman, and good morning, honorable committee members. My name is Herve Bray, and I'm the Shelter Director at Woodstock Farm Sanctuary in High Forest, New York. So currently, we offer sanctuary and care for 365 farm animals. And I'm here to testify in support of the Intro 4 to ban the sale of guinea pigs. So as Shelter Director of the Farm Sanctuary, I can attest that in the past couple of years, since the pandemic started, there's been an increase in inquiries about surrendering various animals. So for farmed animals, notably for us, it's been rabbits, chickens, and ducks, but also guinea pigs. So it's people who are reaching out from New York City, mostly for us, and that ask if we can adopt their guinea pigs or if we can come pick up guinea pigs that are spotted in public spaces. We do not do this. This is not our mission as a farm sanctuary to rescue guinea pigs, and we are not equipped to rescue them. And so we tell those people to contact their local shelters, notably the ACC of New York City. So however, we do rescue other animals like rabbits, chickens, and ducks. And I can testify that the issue that we have with those animals are the same that ACC is meeting, which is notably high costs when associated with the rescue from spaying and neutering. In the case of rabbits, you also need an exotic vet, and we know how expensive that can be. If they seem sick, you need to do blood work. You need to do fecal tests. And often, some of them, we need emergency care, which can be expensive if they've been abandoned outside of the park. For instance, they may need subpoes. And one of the other big issues you have when you are rescuing those guinea pigs or those rabbits like we do is that...
Time expired.
You could just finish up. Go ahead.
Okay. That's it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Our next panelist will be Stephen Gruber. You may begin once the sergeant queues you, and our staff will unmute you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Gruber. I'm the Mayor Director of Communications for the Mayor's Alliance for New York City's Animals. And I'd like to thank the council today for the opportunity to speak. I'll be very brief. My colleagues have said most of what I would say in terms of the need for this bill to be passed with the explosion of guinea pigs and the numbers at the New York City shelters. It's clear that the time has come to shut down the influx of guinea pigs coming into the shelters, both for the benefit of the pigs, the shelters, and those who foot the bill for the care of these guinea pigs. And with Intro 4, we have the opportunity to end the proliferation of guinea pigs suffering, dying, and ending up in the shelters. Passage of this important bill will go a long way to ease the burden on ACC and other local rescues that take in abandoned guinea pigs and surrendered guinea pigs. When New York City passed the bill in 2014 to stem the tide of rabbits coming into the shelters, that was successful in reducing those numbers. And so we have the opportunity now to repeat that same success with the guinea pigs. So the Mayor's Alliance for New York City's Animals heartily supports this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eleonora Mulbegat, you may begin once the sergeant queues you. Thank you.
Starting time.
Hi, I'm Eleonora Mulbegat. I'm an attorney with the Humane Society of New York. Everything that's already been said is what I was going to say, so I would say ditto to that. As has been said, the same reasoning that was used to pass legislation to ban the sale of rabbits from pet stores is applicable to guinea pigs. And so those same successes would probably happen again. So it's so important that this legislation be passed to protect guinea pigs and also to help animal care centers to give them the resources to help the many thousands of animals that need their attention, and there's limited resources. We've already heard how it's difficult to place so many guinea pigs in homes, particularly as they continue to be sold at pet shops. So many have been abandoned. While they're inexpensive to purchase, they're expensive to care for, particularly veterinary care. And the bottom line really is that there's an overpopulation of guinea pigs that really needs to be addressed. And the sale of guinea pigs at pet shops just exacerbates the problem that we already know exists. Intro 4 is humane legislation that will not only help to curtail the influx of guinea pigs at shelters and the abandonment of guinea pigs in our streets and parks, but it'll allow ACC to use its limited resources to help for many other animals that need its help. So the Humane Society of New York sincerely hopes the council will pass this legislation and thanks our colleagues for all the efforts to help get it passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as I've said earlier, that we're looking at sometime during the first quarter of the year, I'm hoping to get this passed. So thank you very much.
Dr. Ellen Crane, you may begin after the sergeant queues you.
Starting time.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here for leading in protecting animals and for your work in serving our city.
Sorry to interrupt you. Is this Eliza or...? Yeah, sorry. Dr. Ellen Crane, you will be testifying next. We're just unmuting her right now. Thank you. Sorry, Dr. Crane, you may begin. Ellen Crane, are you here? You may begin. Sorry, I think we're having some audio issues. We're going to move to our next panelist, and we'll come back to you. Thank you. Ellen Crane, sorry, we're having some audio issues. If you'd like to try calling through your phone, that might make it easier. We're going to move to our next panelist. Okay, we can hear you now. Sorry. Apologies, Crane. We'll come back to you. We're going to go to Eliza Trinidad.
Surrendered and abandoned animals during this pandemic has put a lot of stress on the shelters and depleted resources. But what is not seen is the stress on organizations like mine that provide services and support to our communities. Taking care of an animal companion is already challenging and expensive, and taking care of animals on a large scale is even more so. It requires an enormous amount of time, money, care, and incredible attention to each individual. If this pandemic has taught us anything about how we need to operate in our city and at large is that we cannot continue to operate from an emergency and crisis perspective, that we must assign policies that are preventative and protect the lives of animals, workers, and volunteers. And what we have now is an emergency. We must ban the sale of guinea pigs and encourage adoption from organizations that can offer New Yorkers support and education, like New York Animal Care Centers. If passed, this bill will take the burden of animal shelters and all the organizations working to provide support to New Yorkers. Please consider the passing of this bill a step towards that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eliza. We're having some audio difficulties right now. We're going to take a five-minute break. Nope, we're good? Okay, we are good. Apologies, everyone. Our next witness will be Ellen Crane. You may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Your time has begun.
Ellen Crane, I apologize. Are you...? There you go.
Hi, I'm sorry. I don't know what... I'm actually in a veterinary office with a bunny that was... that we rescued. I'm from... I'm one of the co-founders with my husband of Safe Haven Farm Sanctuary in Poquay, New York. And we have gotten a tremendous number of requests for taking especially small animals that were bought in the city to entertain children while they were home. And now the family is tired of the animal, and they often use those terms. So I want to support strenuously the passage of this...
Sorry, you were muted. We're going to unmute you. Please accept the prompt that says to unmute you. Sorry, Dr. Crane. We're having some audio issues, it seems. The Zoom should be prompting you to unmute to accept the unmute. We're going to take a five-minute break just to figure out what's going on. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Can you hear me?
I apologize now. We are resuming. Yes, we can hear you now. No, we can't. Apologies, we are taking a five-minute break to figure this out. Thank you for your patience. Hi, everyone. Can you please... Cindy, we're going to resume. We are going to move on, and we will come back to Dr. Crane. Apologies for the audio issues. As a reminder, you can submit written testimony to testimony@... Let me get that correct address. @council.nycity.gov. Again, apologies. We will try once again. In the meantime, we're going to move to our... Is that the last one on there? Yeah. We're going to move to our next panel, which will be in-person. And it'll be Elena Natalia from Vifar, Joyce Friedman, Margaret Lee, Jessica Hollander, and Cindy Nunez Del Arco.
Whenever you're ready to start, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Elena Natali. I am a member of the leadership team at Voters for Animal Rights and a resident of District 40 in Brooklyn. Thank you to Speaker Adams, Chairperson Schulman, and the Committee on Health for this opportunity to testify in strong support of Intro 4. I'd also like to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala for her leadership on this issue, as well as the 34 council members who have co-sponsored the legislation, including my representative council member Rita Joseph. Before coming into the city today, I did my morning routine with my cat, Dusty, whom I adopted five years ago. I fed him, gave him his medicine, gave him fresh water, and I scratched his chin and watched as his eyes softened and he prepared to settle in for his first of several naps he'll take throughout the day. I did the same with Freddie, a kitty whom we rescued from the street over the summer. And though it's taken him a bit of time to warm up to chin scratches, he's been happily napping indoors since day one. napping indoors since day one. I left Brooklyn feeling so grateful that Dusty and Freddie are safe and loved. But the images of them resting, warm, comfortable, and safe are juxtaposed with images of animals in need. My social media feeds are a seemingly never-ending scroll of desperate pleas from our city's overrun shelters and independent rescuers searching for fosters and adopters. We do the best that we can to help, so often stretching beyond our limits. The care and the concern are infinite, but sadly, the resources, the space, the money, and the time are not. And with every animal purchased in a pet store, the situation worsens. The rescuers become more overwhelmed, and the number of animals whom we can't help gets higher and higher. But passing Intro Four can help significantly. By banning the sale of guinea pigs in pet stores, we can help countless animals in need. The guinea pigs who are bred for sale in deplorable conditions, all too often to be abandoned and neglected, as well as cats, dogs, and rabbits who could be better helped by rescues if they weren't so overtaxed by the number of the guinea pigs who are surrendered to them daily. To help all the animals in our shelter system, as well as the people who work so hard to care for them, I ask that you please support Intro Four. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you for this opportunity to testify on behalf of Voters for Animal Rights in favor of Intro Four. My name is Joyce Friedman, and I'm on the Board of Directors of Vfar. I'm a former social worker and a long-term animal advocate. I live in District 29 in Forest Hills, and I give a particular thank you to my council member and committee chair Schulman for holding this hearing. Passing this bill will not only stop animals suffering, but will also support two groups of people, those who work and volunteer in the animal sheltering profession and pet owners. The selling of unsterilized guinea pigs in pet stores, while ACC had taken over 750 surrendered guinea pigs this year, is directly contributing to the overpopulation of these animals at ACC with no end in sight. This astounding number of 750 doesn't include abandoned guinea pigs in parks, et cetera. ACC's hard-working staff, volunteers, and those at partner rescue groups desperately need relief from this solvable problem. Stopping these unnecessary sales will halt the surrender cycle and simultaneously bring more people to ACC to adopt from their huge population of guinea pigs instead of purchasing them at stores, only to often give them up, as we've heard so much today. There are also many well-meaning pet lovers who impulse buy guinea pigs lured by stores who often sell a guinea pig cage with two free guinea pigs, or via a similar sales tactic which presents these animals as inanimate objects without long-term needs. Pet stores also will sell unsterilized pairs of males and females, which leads to painful surrenders of these beloved family pets by well-meaning families with no animal care education given to them. On the contrary, all the support and education is given to them when they adopt from shelters and rescues, and unsterilized pairs are not adopted out. When the sale of rabbits was banned in 2014 by this New York City Council, the surrender of rabbits dropped to ACC. Intro Four is a common sense bill which will help guinea pigs in the same way and as well help our city's animal shelter and rescue heroes and pet owners. Thank you so much to Councilmember Ayala, the other bill sponsors, and to Speaker Adams for holding this hearing. Thank you so much.
Next, go ahead.
Oh, thank, thank you. My name is Margaret Lee. I'm an animal advocate resident of New York City, and I'm here today for guinea pigs in support of Intro Four prohibiting the sale of guinea pigs as pets. The passage of this crucial bill will result in our becoming a more compassionate community. Guinea pigs are misunderstood in so many ways. Their docile, sensitive nature has led them to be inappropriately viewed as ideal starter pets for children, with both parents and children not realizing the complexity, commitment, and cost of their care. Often bought on a whim from pet stores, as we've heard so often today, when the challenge of their upkeep emerge, they routinely end up being abandoned in parks where their chance of survival is zero, and where they're fated to endure a torturous death of starvation, thirst, freezing, and predation. They are also frequent victims of cruelty, with the crimes against them largely unseen, unreported, uncared about. Oftentimes, too, they're left at already overwhelmed adoption centers where their chance of adoption is sadly slim. Given their sensitivity and vulnerability, even in diligently caring homes, there are many problems associated with their care. Meeting the guinea pigs' nutritional requirements, maintaining favorable temperatures, low household noise levels, constant supply of temathy hay, daily cage cleaning, regular vet visits for nail trimmings, these are just a few of the demands a family would have to meet to adequately care for their sensitive, high-maintenance creatures. Sadly, even before reaching a home, pet stores themselves fail to meet these bare minimum requirements, with extreme negligence and abusiveness being pervasive. Guinea pigs are prone to respiratory ailments, including difficult-to-treat pneumonia. These conditions require costly veterinary care plus careful administration of medications. Such treatment is not addressed in pet stores, and when bought by hapless families, the, the unexpected cost is often what leads to park abandonment in critical, or critically overwhelmed, adoption centers. As a prey species, guinea pigs startle easily, given to erratic movements that frequently lead to traumatic death due to children suddenly dropping their fragile pet. Just recently, when speaking to a friend about the urgency of Intro Four, she told me she is still very much haunted by the death of the guinea pig she accidentally dropped as a child when both she and her pet were suddenly frightened. It is critical New York City pave a path of compassion by passing Intro Four. It will not only protect guinea pigs from routine neglect, inadvertent mishandling, or deliberate cruelty, it will also spare well-meaning New Yorkers and their children decades of guilt from inevitable mishaps. In short, a lot of unhappiness can be avoided by passage of Intro Four. Please, let's get this done. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Hollander, and I am a Brooklyn resident, business owner, and a volunteer with Voters for Animal Rights. I'm here to testify in favor of Intro Four, and I'd like to thank Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala for introducing the legislation, as well as Speaker Adams and Chairperson Schulman for holding this hearing. I personally do not know a lot about guinea big, guinea pigs specifically, so just more broadly, I want to say that the idea of buying and selling animals of any species has never sat right with me. I do believe that there will come a time when humanity looks back on the breeding and trade of other species as fundamentally unethical for a litany of reasons, but primarily because where there is money involved, there is invariably abuse and exploitation, and in this case, abandonment and neglect. I am continually in awe of animal care centers and the tireless network of animal rescuers throughout New York City, and I do think that it's time the government aided them by protecting future animals from being purchased and then abused or abandoned. So I ask the council to please vote yes on the bill to ban the sale of guinea pigs and to take this one small step in the direction of thoughtful stewardship of the very valuable lives of other species, and in this case, vulnerable guinea pigs.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Cindy Nunez Del Arco, and I'm here to support Voters for Animal Rights. Whether animals are conscious and aware is a question many of us have caught ourselves thinking of at some point or another. So.
Just pull the microphone a little bit.
Yeah. So I invite you to think about the conscious experience of someone close to you to answer this yourself. You may think this is a radical thought, but then why is it that researchers have spent countless of hours and resources to study animal behavior, in particular, that of rodents? Because rodents such as prairie voles and guinea pigs can tell us how we love, how we care for our mates and our children, how we experience safety, fear, loneliness, and so many other emotional states. When prairie voles bond, they do so for life. The male alongside the female raise their young together, and when separation or death occurs, their stress systems and hormones like vasopressin, which regulates blood pressure increase intensity, they retreat and show increased anxiety in laboratory tests. Under somewhat different circumstances, a 1986 study followed 12 guinea pigs placed in long-term isolation. You'll probably know how that feels like. Among their many symptoms were high levels of the stress hormone cortisol, severe loss of more than 20% their body weight, and death. Out of the 12, only five survived, who gained low-ranking social positions and were unable to reproduce. These may be small beings, but they are conscious beings, which we ship in stacked bins and small cages to pet suppliers under extreme conditions, and when they don't arrive frozen or dead after that traumatic transit, we display in storefronts, releasing them to people under a quick transaction which serves to fund the cycle of harm and torture. In the reverberating words of American ecologist Carl Sfina, "Animals have the same imperatives as we have: stay alive, keep our babies alive, and let life continue." And for this, I would like to invite you to support Intro Four. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also want to give a shout out to my constituent Joyce Friedman, who keeps me honest. And it's not always easy being an elected official, but no, please know that I care very deeply for our animals. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. We will now, try again, go to a remote panel. I'm just gonna remind everyone that a member of our staff will be unmuting you, and please accept the prompt that comes up in order to be unmuted, and then the sergeant will queue you before you may begin. The next panel will be Ellen Crane, Barbara Dennehy, Kathy Nazari, Mike Bober, and Nathan Semel. Ellen Crane, you may begin once the sergeant queues you. No. We're gonna move to the next. Barbara Dennehy, if you are ready, you may begin once the sergeant queues you.
You may begin.
Nope. Is Barbara, Barbara, are you on Zoom? No? All right, we'll move to the next. Kathy Nazari, you may begin after the sergeant queues you and we unmute you. Thank you.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Schulman and members of the Health Committee. I'm Kathy Nazari, founder and chair of the Lights Out Coalition, and I thank you for the opportunity to present testimony written by our member Jessica Savante, founder of They All Want to Live, animal rescuer and rehabilitator and member of the New York Bar Association's Animal Law Committee. We fully support Intro Four and thank Councilwoman Ayala for this important legislation. The purchase and subsequent disposal of companion animals is a widespread issue that has far-reaching negative effects. Many do not survive the ordeal. A recent Times article noted the uptick in procurement and surrender of animals during COVID. Folks who purchased pets during lockdown did not make a lifetime commitment to these animals, but merely sought companionship during a time of temporary isolation. Afterwards, guinea pigs were surrendered at a much higher rate. Because they do not behave like cats or dogs, people simply don't feel as guilty giving them away. It could not be easier or cheaper to purchase small animals like guinea pigs from pet stores. They're cute, small, and are constantly bought for kids without a second thought to their long-term care or needs. Rather than investing precious few minutes in educating themselves, which would make a world of difference to the animal, people make the rash choice of abandoning their impulse purchases. Also, guinea pigs are purchased in pairs. Since no neuter mandate exists for them, they quickly reproduce and are then surrendered or abandoned, many of whom are pregnant or just had babies. New York's Animal Care Center, which keeps them in stacked trays for the duration of their short, sad lives, reported 769 guinea pigs relinquished to them so far this year alone, more than double pre-pandemic levels. Most people just abandon them nonstop in city parks and buildings, give them to Craigslist, or even leave them out with the trash. Guinea pigs don't and can't live in the wild here, but they are regularly dumped illegally. Most will die of the elements starvation or predation before any rescuer even knew they had been abandoned. The problem is so much more prevalent than people realize.
Thanks, buyer.
And is getting worse. We must end the sale of guinea pigs. There is no downside. Guinea pigs can be adopted from ACC and other rescue groups across the city. Therefore, we urge you to please pass Intro Four. We are submitting a more in-depth testimony electronically, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I just, I also just want to caution people, we'll let you finish. If you're over the two minutes, we're not gonna interrupt you, but we have a lot of folks testifying today, and we really want to give people the opportunity. So to the extent that you can do that is great. You can always submit testimony, because we have to pull it all together anyway. So thank you very much.
Our next panelist will be Mike Bober from Pet Advocacy Network. Please accept the prompt to be unmuted and wait until the sergeant queues you. Thank you.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Bober, and I'm the president of the Pet Advocacy Network. I'm actually here representing a voice that thus far has been absent in the conversation, which is that of New York pet retailers. We are concerned about this, and obviously, because this, this brings something to pet shops that we think is wholly unnecessary, and that is an air of antagonism and a mindset that pet shops are somehow culprits in need of punishment rather than partners in pet care. We're here today to say that it's not the case. We share the concerns that all of the previous speakers have had about the lack of education and the need for better approaches to make sure that the animals that are going into people's homes, specifically guinea pigs in this case, are as well cared for and as well-treated as they, as we know they deserve to be. We want to work with the city on this. We appreciate the hard work of animal care. We appreciate the influx, the numbers that have gone up in the past years. We would, however, point out that, that sales numbers indicate that sales are actually going down. The, the numbers that came through in 2020 and in early 2021 have tapered off, and, and what you will see as a result is there is likely to be a commensurate drop-off in the number of abandonments as well. Our concern is that this is a solution to a problem that is, is lagging the, the data that's out there. And, and for what it's worth, the, the other concern that we've got is that we keep hearing that, that the ban on the sale of rabbits was a success. I'm, I'm looking at intake numbers for 2021 and 2022 that indicate that 350-plus rabbits were surrendered in 2021, and almost 400 have been surrendered so far this year. Our concern is, again, that this is a solution that does not appropriately address the, the concern that's been raised. We want to be partners. We want to help. We want to work with the city to increase.
Your time, I guess, buyer. It's, it's fine. Just finish, finish your thought.
And, and we do appreciate everything that you're doing on this issue. We want to work with you. We do not believe that we should be held out as opponents in need of reining in, but rather as partners in pet care.
So I have a question for you, sir. Do you know where the guinea pigs are coming from that go to the pet stores? Like, where, where are they, where are they, where are they coming in from?
Absolutely. Pet stores are required to source live, to source mammals from USDA-licensed and regulated breeders.
Thank you very much, and for your testimony.
Thank you.
We'll now move to Nathan Semel. Please wait until, please accept the prompt to be unmuted, and then wait until the sergeant queues you. Thank you.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Nathan Semel. I'm a member of the leadership team at Voters for Animal Rights and a District 7 resident here in Manhattan. In 1974, I was four years old when my parents surprised me with a guinea pig they bought from a Manhattan pet store and named him Tigger after the character in Winnie the Pooh. Tigger was the first of many animals in my life, and I adored him. Tigger was also the last animal we ever bought. Fortunately, my parents learned that guinea pigs, like cats, dogs, and rabbits, are available for adoption at animal shelters, and that buying them from pet stores only perpetuates breeding, including from awful commercial breeding mills. They passed that lesson on to me. And why buy from a pet store when there's an opportunity to help overburden shelters and rescues and still be able to come home with an adorable companion? Now, perhaps there wasn't a need for legislation such as Intro Four in 1974, but there is now. 2020 changed everything. Countless people made impulse purchases or innocently went to pet stores seeking companionship due to the pandemic. As you've heard, when those people could no longer care for the guinea pigs, or because they went back to work, or because their financial situation has turned, they surrendered or dumped them, and it has not stopped. I trust the experts on that, and it has become unsustainable for our city's animal shelters and rescues, and unmanageable for their mostly volunteer staffs. So here I am, 48 years later, asking this council to prohibit the sale of guinea pigs in pet stores. While times have changed, our affection for guinea pigs has not, but we can continue as is. So thank you, Deputy Speaker Ayala, and Chairperson Schulman, and the numerous cosponsors of Intro Four, including my representative, Shawna Breu. This is common sense and proven legislation. It is effective, humane, and it will make the lives of guinea pigs, other shelter animals, and shelter employees so much better. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony.
We'll now move back to in-person panel. The next panel will be Gwen Kaiser from Reenie's Rabbit Rescue, Donna Coles, Coles from Greenwich House OAC, Angela Connell from Puppy Kitty New York City, and, or Vivian Barna from All About Rabbits Rescue, and Loretta Wilson. You may begin when you are ready. Thank you.
Okay. Hey. So, my name is Gwen. I helped found Reenie's Rabbit Rescue. And we've been around for almost a decade. We take in rabbits but have been forced to take in guinea pigs and also feral cats as a result of the overwhelming demand. I have like a lot of notes, but I know there's a limited amount of time, and I don't want to bore.
You can always submit that too. You can write them up. And you have, she has how much time?
You can submit up to 72 hours after this hearing. If you would like to submit written testimony.
Thank you. I, I won't bore you with echoing the sentiments, facts, and well, whatever the word is of everybody that's gone before me. I've not disagreed with a single statement. They're all right. I'll tell you quickly, the most recent, I'm responsible for the guinea pigs in my care because nobody else wants to take care of them. They're the most difficult. Rabbits are easier. Cats are easier. Nobody wants to take care of the guinea pigs. They are so messy. They are, you got to clean their water constantly. They're just a lot of work. So, I end up taking care of the guinea pigs for the most part. Most recently, we were contacted by a landlord. Oh, our tenant left behind a box of eight in the apartment. So, we took them. Actually, they contacted another rescue, and the rescue contacted us. Look, I'm so overwhelmed. Can you help? So, we were like, sure. They were in our geographical location anyway. So, one of them was so pregnant. I mean, I have a photo I can show you. I don't, her head is like that, and her body's like that. I don't even, it's physically impossible looking. But, um, so we're waiting to see if we do have to do a cesarean on her. The other one we just recently took, I actually was crying. It was so upsetting to me, which I've never done. This poor lady, a poor teenager, got kicked out of her house by her parents. I mean, I don't know the backstory. And she had purchased this adorable little guinea pig as a therapy pet, and she was so devastated. The homeless shelter wouldn't let her take it. And so, you know, like us animal rescuers were driven like unexplainably, inexplicably. I will never stop. And it's not pleasant, but I forced my do it. I forced myself to do it. And it's for the animals, but it's also for the people. Like this poor woman, she was so relieved. She calls constantly, do you still have my guinea pig? Can you hold him for me? I said, fine, we'll hold him for you until you get back on your feet. And like that, that support for that woman is, she's going to be one, like down the road, she's going to be one of those people that's not going to have to tell people about a terrible sob story about her pet. She's actually going to have a nice story to tell people, how the rescue held it for her and gave it back. So, that's something that's never mentioned is the emotional toll on humans. And of course, the financial aspect as well, the taxpayer dollars. You know, us rescuers, we pick up the slack. We don't get a penny from anybody. I have to go out there with a can and raise every dollar we get. And, and I literally do that sometimes. So, it also helps with the taxpayer dollars and eliminates the burden on shelters because most shelters do not even take guinea pigs, let alone rabbits. And sometimes they don't take cats. So, and that's a government allocation of funds. But I'm going to just cut to the chase to answer the pet shop person. I forgot his name. I'm sorry. Now, I would like to directly respond to him. I have tried many times to work with pet stores. I have written them letters. I've written Petco and Petsmart letters. They send me back a form letter. They don't even have the courtesy to answer my questions or call me. They don't care. Also, there's a local pet store, the mom and pop one. I went in there, I think this was last year. And I asked him to please give the animals hay. There was no hay for the guinea pigs and the rabbits. Do you know? He called the cops on me to get me removed from the store. This is what we're dealing with when you deal with pet stores. You can't, you can't, it's like they're a brick wall. There is one gentleman that runs a pet store near me, Pet Supplies Plus. It's similar to Petco and Petsmart, but it's, it's franchised. The parent company is a hedge fund company. So, they have tons of money, but they are franchised. So, they, they like to promote that they're locally owned, which is sort of true. So, I have a pretty good relationship with us, with him. He donates us cat food to help for the feral cats. And they do not sell rabbits, but they do insist upon selling guinea pigs. And whenever I get a guinea pig, I go over and I say, hey, we just got another guinea pig from you. Oh, that's a shame. Why is that happening? I'm like, well, it's happening because people think, you know, they're easy, and then they're not. And can you take them back? Oh, sure, I'll take them back. Okay, I'll have people start calling him instead. Well, I did. They call us. We get daily calls with guinea pigs. Forget about rabbits and cats, just guinea pigs. So, I've started having them call him. And do you believe, do you, he said, no, I'm not going to take them back. So, I have to go back to them many, many times. Hey, you said you'd take them back, and now you're not? Oh, oh, um, yeah, no, tell them to keep calling us. And I've, this has gone on like for months. And so, in rebuttal to that gentleman from the pet stores, okay? I've tried working with you. It doesn't work. Now, if we were to pass a law and we were to come up with an arrangement that would allow the pet stores to continue selling guinea pigs with some sort of oversight, then you have to worry about enforcing the law, which is a whole nother ball of wax. You got to hire somebody who's not going to be paid off, who actually cares and is going to go around and work with these pet stores.
I, I appreciate it. No, I appreciate that where the, the bill has a lot of sponsors. I'm not worried about that. And thank you for, you can submit whatever you want in terms of the testimony because we put it all on the record, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Vivian Barna. And I'm the founder and director of All About Rabbits Rescue.
Sorry, can you turn your mic on?
Sorry. Do I get just a couple of seconds? Okay. Vivian Barna, founder of All About Rabbits Rescue and based in Forest Hills, Queens. I think that's your district, right? We've adopted out nearly 600 rabbits. We've prevented many rabbits from being turned into ACC whenever possible. I answer my phone just about 24/7. We take in strays from the Five Boroughs and also Nassau and Suffolk County. I want to express my gratefulness for the open admissions policy here in New York City. And I maybe want to correct and say that, you know, ACC is probably the only open-admission policy shelter in Long Island, in Long Island too, or even the whole state practically. In my opinion, pet shops operate on the basis of omission and misinformation to conduct their small animal sales, including guinea pigs. I have no love for pet shops. No, there's no way a pet shop can properly transmit all the information that's needed to, for a guinea pig sale or small animals, parrots, et cetera. They're all a lot of work. I'd like to know what, how this pet advocate, pet advocacy, pet shop guy, whatever he was, what he's offering? What has he done to work with the city of New York? I've gone to Petco's. They don't even know what Pet Finder is. I went to the Forest Hills Petco. They don't know what Pet Finder is. They couldn't have given a hoot about passing information to me on rabbits that people want to surrender. All these Petcos and Petsmarts, they all get these phone calls. Where can I buy a rabbit? Where can I surrender a rabbit? I actually did speak to higher-ups of Petco years ago. They were not interested in making a referral system from the pet stores to rescues. Not interested. So, again, I have no sympathy for Petco or Petsmart. If we reduce their profits from guinea pigs, I'm not going to shed a tear at all. There was a question about the cost of guinea pigs. I can tell you rabbits cost about $3 a day, not including vet care. So, a guinea pig is probably about the same, maybe a little bit less. You folks brought up education, like humane education in the classrooms. It's the parents that are making these crazy decisions and allowing their kids to, you know, rule them. You know, parents are not taking, you know, control. So, I think education has to be geared to parents and teachers. We get calls from teachers who want a classroom rabbit pet or a classroom guinea pig pet. So, I think that, you know, there's a lot of force behind New York City government and ACC to let the pet shops know that we're not going to support you, you know, if you're going to sell guinea pigs. And, and, or you need to refer people to, why can't they refer, you know, potential adopters or even surrenders? I'm also confused a little bit. I, I know that with the rabbit ban, it didn't address breeders. Breeders have stepped up. Breeders are a big underground economy, especially in New Jersey. And they have stepped up. And I think that is why the numbers of rabbits coming in last year and this year, or whatever, has not really gone down. I get a call from a lot of people that purchase breeders, Long Island, New Jersey. I don't know if this guinea pig bill addresses breeders. I don't think so.
No, because we don't have, we don't have authority over that. The council doesn't.
Okay.
So, yeah, if you could just wrap up, please, and then submit whatever you want.
I'm wrapped up, and I appreciate you all being here. And thank you so much.
And thank you.
Hello. My name is Angela Connell. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am an individual animal rescuer for over 20 years. I am also a rescuer for the nonprofit organization Puppy Kitty New York City. As a rescuer, I've seen it, it all, but the guinea pig crisis is one of the worst. From guinea pigs in homes to in deplorable conditions in parks and on the side of the road dumped and discarded. This is mainly due to impulsive buyers who primarily purchase for children. I was one of those moms back in 1999 who purchased one at a pet store for my child. I was in my early twenties back then, not knowing what I know now. I was not educated at the pet store or given any direction. My daughter dropped the guinea pig. A few months later, her leg was broken, and she had to be euthanized. I could not afford the vet bill at that time. I was only a child. And I believe once the leg is broken, it is not easy to repair. In my opinion, this is not a pet for a child. And we have to live with that guilt to this very day. And the trauma it caused to my child as, as well, who still brings it up as an adult. They are often neglected and abused, housed in cramped-up tiny cages on a dresser in a bedroom, and then discarded when the desire has worn off. Also, the vet bills for injury or illness is not affordable, and exotic vets are minimal. And then the vet shortage as well. Pet stores sell them to anyone. No home checks, no references, just $50, and you get to walk away with a small pet for your child that is anything but small or inexpensive or less to care for. In fact, they are not easy to care for properly. Being on the front line in the streets and dealing with owner surrender as well, this is a serious crisis. But with the option to buy in pet stores, we are not getting anywhere. On May 5th, Megan and I from Puppy Kitty rescued eight guinea pigs on the service road of the Long Island Expressway, which is a known dumping ground for guinea pigs. And many more since that time we've rescued. So, I thank you for considering Intro Four to ban the sale of guinea pigs, and I fully support this bill.
I want to thank you all for your passion and commitment to our animals. We're on the Long Island Expressway. Long Island Expressway in where?
Actually, it's on the border of Massey and Elmhurst. Yeah. So, it's on the side, and there's like this like grassy, brushy area. And I know that on that particular day, 10 were found, but someone had rescued a couple of them prior to that. And we don't know if we got them all.
If you get, if you get a better location and you could give it to the committee, we can advise the local council member there to look into that with their, with their precinct. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to check to see if Donna Coles or Loretta Wilson were here and would like to testify. You were supposed to be on this panel? No? We will move to our last in-person panel, and then we will move to remote. But this in-person panel will be Soraya Khan, Natasha Resnick, Pilar Maya, and Nina Briganzar. Roxanne Delgado, I believe you were registered to testify in person, but then requested remote. We will keep a lookout for Zoom to see if you log on, and then we will include you on a remote panel. Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Hi. This is for not only guinea pigs. This is for all animal legislation. My name is Soraya Khan, and I currently work on the development team for an organization in Brooklyn called Refoundry, which helps formerly incarcerated individuals meet training and education goals so they can acquire achievable work skills. I'm here today first of all to say thank you to the council to addressing this issue. While on the surface, many may think it's just a guinea pig. Quite profoundly, this is about so much more. This is about benevolence. The term compassion gets thrown around a lot today, but to truly embody the meaning of living a compassionate existence, one must walk with a compassionate heart, listen with a compassionate ear, and view the world through a compassionate eye. with a compassionate ear, and view the world through a compassionate eye. For many, it takes discipline and usually a shifting of one's own perspectives. Now, I currently don't think it's really feasible to cut all ties with all harmful industries as the chains of cause and effect in our modern world are just too complex. But I do think it's possible for society to find new ways to adjust existing practices and actively pursue ways that inflict less harm on this planet and within the animal kingdom. There is momentum to doing the right thing legislatively on a local and state level, nationally, and globally. We can certainly agree that our treatment of animals included within factory farms and deforestation practices have affected us almost catastrophic levels. Senator Cory Booker, someone who I admire mostly, I really look at him as one legislator who is leading the charge on animal welfare reform. We need more of him. I conclude by saying this. How do we wish to leave this earth when we pass and when we die? Because at the end, there's only one thing that will truly matter. Not your bank account, not your status, and not your title or position. Did you move through life inflicting harm, or did you actively create space for kindness and love towards your fellow man and all living creatures? Thank you for your time today, and please, please pass Intro 4.
Thank you. Go ahead, next.
Hi, I'm Pilar Maya. I'm a wildlife rehabilitator. I've been a rehabber since 2019, and I deal with rescuers from all five boroughs all over the city. I normally stick to just rodents, squirrels specifically, but the one non-rodent call I get all the time, it's guinea pigs. They're running around, they can't catch them, they need to borrow a trap, it's going to get cold, they're going to die, blah, blah, blah. So that's why I'm here, because a lot of my time was spent the last year trying to help guinea pigs, and it's time that I don't have. I rescued over 300 squirrels last year alone, and I just, as a wildlife rehabber, I don't have time to help with guinea pigs, but they need so much help right now. I was going to talk about how guinea pigs make horrible pets, but I think everybody already touched upon that. I don't think they should be pets at all. They're very shy animals. Children should not be holding them, they should not be in classrooms. I don't let people hold my chihuahua that's six pounds. I've had people drop him inappropriately. These are animals that are, they're very afraid of people. I think obviously, as we all know, guinea pig adoption would be much better than selling in pet shops because we're looking for guardians when they're getting adopted instead of a sale. So that is my statement to support Intro 4.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hello, my name is Nina Braganzer. I'm here today to support Intro 4. Every day, I see posts on social media of people who want to rehome their guinea pigs that they had bought on a whim from a pet store, not realizing the costs and responsibility this entails. And just as often, I see posts about guinea pigs being dumped on the streets, left to their own demise. By adopting from a shelter or rescue, the future pet owner will be vetted and educated, leading to better animal welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. My name's Natasha Resnick. I came today to support Intro 4 legislation to prohibit sale of guinea pigs in New York City pet stores. I found my companion guinea pig outside abandoned by someone. He was just put outside. It was obvious my tuchu lived in a home and welcomed affection and friendship. It saddens me when I see pet stores selling guinea pigs relatively inexpensive. They seem small, but they require care, food, safety, and shelter by their people, and can live from five to eight years. When reality sets in, guinea pigs are abandoned. My tuchu was lucky one, but I've read stories they are abandoned in parks. As they are born in captivity, they cannot forage or fend for themselves. They are subject to starvation or predation. Many are surrendered to shelters who are already very stressed with intake of animals. It is the compassionate thing to do to not sell guinea pigs. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question, Ms. Pilar. So I was sitting here too, thinking like, why are they pets? Do you know how that came about?
They shouldn't be pets. How are they held?
I know.
You shouldn't hold them.
But how did that, do you know how that, like through history? Not that you might know.
Well, I'm a wildlife biologist too.
Oh, so how did, how did that hap? I'm just curious.
It's how did people start domesticating them?
Like how did they become pets?
Because they're cute. Have you seen their face? They look like they have a friendly, cute little teddy bear face, but they're actually terrified of people. It's really sad. Just walking over here, the Department of Education has a classroom, there's a guinea pig by itself, sitting in sawdust in front of an open window with no place to hide. That is terrifying for an animal like that.
We'll work on that.
It's, it's right over there. I took a picture. It's also by itself.
Would you send it to us, please?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get, we'll.
Yeah, yeah.
The, yeah, I know, because they, they weren't bred to be pets, right?
No, they were domesticated because they're adorable, but they're not friendly animals. It's not like a cat that will.
Where are they originally from? Like what part of the world?
Peru, I believe.
Okay. I appreciate that because I'm just trying to, I'm sitting here thinking about this. One, I want to get this, I want to get this bill through, but also we're going to look at the other aspects of it. That's why we're going to ask you to send, we'll get you the email to send, to, where can she send it?
Send it to me. I can give her my card.
All right, she's going to give you her card.
Okay.
And send her the, okay?
Okay.
Because we want to, we want this to be meaningful. So I know we're here to discuss the legislation, but other things that come out of it, we want to see where we can follow up.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. We will now be moving to our last panel, and it will be remote. Ellen Crane, we're going to call you first. Apologies again for all of the audio issues. Before you begin, a member of our staff will unmute you. Please accept the prompt before you begin and wait until the sergeant queues you. Thank you. We're going to move to our next panelist, Dominic Acocella. Please wait until you're unmuted and accept the prompt, and then wait until the sergeant queues you. Thank you.
Starting time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for giving, giving this matter attention finally. Just going to tell a story. Every so often, a friend of mine asks me to look after Ginger, her guinea pig. When I stop by to feed her and clean her cage, she squeals with delight. Ginger, that is, my friend. She recognizes me, and when I first come up to her spacious abode, she sticks her nose to the cage and nibbles and wants a treat. When I put my finger near her nose, she gently bumps it. She does not bite me. Sometimes, before feeding her, I pick her up, I place her against my chest, and she purrs. But it turns out, she does not like being picked up, and when I have, when I leave, she screams with threat. If I cannot pick her up, for I am also allergic, I can pet her, and she purrs. But once she's been fed, I cannot touch her. She will jump and run off and hide in one of her many chambers. She will tell me to leave her alone. See, I have served my purpose and am no longer needed, no longer important. This happens again and again, and I am simply floored by her ability to emote and play and know what she wants and know what to do and to say to get it. Clearly, Ginger is a sentient being, and yet her sisters and brothers are not in this city being treated with dignity, and the fault lies with us. But today's proposed ban is one small step we can take to ameliorate this terrible situation. Animals being purchased as pets from pet stores when there are plenty of homeless ones in our shelters and on our streets is massively problematic. This strikes at the core of what is wrong with a community that professes to care for life and yet allows animals to be used and discarded like fast fashion. Some might say.
Time expired.
It is, okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to say I fully support this ban. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And as a reminder, everyone can submit written testimony up to 72 hours after this hearing at testimony@council.nycity.gov. And committee staff, as well as the chair, we review all testimony in full. The next three panelists, I'll just name them all so you all are prepared, will be Shavara Sarabian, Jennifer Shannon, and Adita Burnkrant. Shavara, you may begin after the staff unmutes you. You accept the prompt, and the sergeant queues you. Thank you.
Starting time.
Hi, thank you for your time, and thank you for taking this bill under consideration. I just want to echo everything that's been said here. Today, I, I've also, as a child, had small animal pets that were not properly taken care of because they did not belong in a family that wasn't properly ready to take on that responsibility or for a child too. And I still do feel remorse to this day, and it did impact me, and I do feel like it probably does impact these families who aren't properly educated. And I do also volunteer at the ASPCA as part of the adoption team, and I, I know how much care they put into and time into educating and helping and taking back the animals if people can't take them on. And that is just such a better way to go about it. It's better for the human, and it's better for the animal. And so, thank you again for taking this into consideration.
Thank you. Our next panelist will be Jennifer Shannon. Please accept the unmute, and you may begin once the sergeant queues you. Thank you.
Starting time.
Hi, thank you for taking my testimony. I always had dogs and cats growing up, and in the recent few years, I had rescued a rabbit in the park, and that's where my small animal journey began. So I have fostered rabbits for years now, and I just got into guinea pig rescue about two years ago. I currently have four guinea pigs, none of which I went out to actively buy or adopt. They were dumped in parks in my local neighborhood, and in our local group, they were concerns, guinea pigs found in the park, did anybody lose their guinea pigs? I'm like, nobody lost their guinea pigs. So I, I got a team together because I did do the rabbit rescue with All About Rabbit Rescue, and I said, "All right, we can get these guinea pigs. Four hours, four hours to rescue all of these guinea pigs on two different occasions." I'm going to echo what everybody else said, is they are very difficult pets to take care of. They don't like the contact, like everybody else has said. They love you when you have food for them. They require a lot of work. The one guinea pig that I have finally, well, I have two that I finally accepted that I will no longer foster in their mind, just went to the vet, cost me $500 in the past two visits because she has a slight cold and she has to stay on antibiotics for three weeks just to make sure she's okay. I used to shop in our local Petco all the time for rabbit supplies. I can't go in there at all because they don't have anything for guinea pigs, but yet they sell guinea pigs, and that is the most confusing part to me. And I've deliberately had conversations with people that work there, and as nice as they are, cannot tell you anything about the guinea pigs. Just basic conversation, what do they eat? What are, what kind of care? Should I just adopt one? And they can't answer any of the questions. They give you very, very bare minimum knowledge, and it amazes me. Something as simple as they're supposed to take vitamin C every single day, but yet they don't sell it. So I said, "How do you sell guinea pigs? And you don't even have the supplies like they need? And you don't even have carriers? How do I get the guinea pig home? Oh, we'll put them in a box for you." Well, why wouldn't you sell carriers if you're selling guinea pigs? So, I mean, that's a concern to me too, and I understand the gentleman was saying he supports the efforts of everybody, but I go into pet stores, and they're not prepared to help people understand the care that these small little animals need, and it's just cruel. And I fully support Intro 4, and I thank you for bringing this to the floor, and thank you for hearing me today, and I will also be submitted in written testimony.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Our next panelist will be Adita Burnkrant. Please wait and accept the prompt to be unmuted, and then wait until the sergeant queues you, and then you may begin. Thanks.
Starting time.
Thank you, Health Committee Chair Lynn Schulman, members of the Health Committee, Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, for holding this important hearing. My name is Adita Burnkrant, and I'm the Executive Director of NiKlass, New Yorkers for Clean, Livable, and Safe Streets. NiKlass strongly supports passage of Intro 4, which would prohibit the sale of guinea pigs in New York City pet shops. And there's been so many amazing information given today, I'm not going to repeat it. Decides to say that Intro 4 really presents a common sense solution to the large and growing problem that we've all learned about today. When I was a child, we actually did have numerous guinea pigs, and as an adult, I understand that we had no idea how to take care of them. We're not given proper information, and that's an unfortunate situation that we hear is still happening today, decades later. So when Intro, I just want to end on saying that when Intro 4 passes, New York City residents can still adopt guinea pigs as pets into their homes and families if they choose to do so. They just won't be purchasing them from pet shops as cheap impulse buys, but instead adopting from responsible shelters and rescue groups across the city, which can educate them about the specific needs and significant responsibilities that go along with the lifelong care of guinea pigs. Information that I was not given, my parents were not given as a child. So on behalf of NiKlass, we hope that you will pass Intro 4 to end the needless suffering and deaths of thousands of guinea pigs and to help educate and promote more responsible pet ownership for all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Yeah, I'm just going to wrap up. That was the last testimony that we had. I want to thank everyone who participated today, and, you know, this is something that is very important to me. I know it's very important to folks that are here today. We're going to push to get this passed as quickly as we can. I also want to stress to folks that some of the things that were brought up today, separate from this, that we're going to also take a look at that as well. So I just wanted you to know that. That's, that's, that's why we're here. That's why we have these hearings, and please feel free to contact the committee or my office if anybody needs anything. And with that, we're done.
Oh, wait, before that, let me just, sorry, sorry. I just wanted to make a little quick spiel, sorry.
She has to give her info.
I just want to see if there's anyone present on, in the room or on Zoom that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand.